...presentation. Sure, there's gonna be some questions, but know that the vote tonight is only part one. You will go to the ballot next week, the actual ballot, and cast a ballot for or against the end as well. So this is a two-part program. I just want to make sure we're all clear on that. Don, you have your motion.
Read the motion again.
Absolutely. Now you'll read your motion. We have to repeat this process.
I approve that the town votes appropriate up to $60,000, $600,000 by borrowing to renovate the town's senior center located at 104 Allen Street, building all the halls incidental to the latest area view and to authorize the pressure with the approval of this appointment to issue any bond or note that may be necessary for the purpose and to apply the premium received by the town on sale of the bonds or notes thereon, less than such premium applied pending of the cost of the term that is defined in the notes. To pay projected costs and reduce the amounts caused by borrowing by the amount of the premium and so forth, we invite that our, that the vote taken on their own shall be expressly contained on approval by the voters that in essence of the Proposition 2 and 1/2 death exclusion of the town who raves the money needed to repay its share of borrowing outside the limits established by Proposition 2 and 1/2 MBL chapter behind Section 21 on 6.
There was a second?
Second.
All right, there was a motion of a second. Before we make the advisory committee recommendations, point it out to me, and I just want to make sure everybody heard the same as the question that came from my right. When I read you the actual article, it's known to expand and renovate. Somebody thought that and they left the expand and renovate part out.
We did.
So, I think as moderator, I will within my right to simply as a point of clarification to say to match the article or the motion should be by borrowing to expand and renovate. So I just want to make sure that we heard that, that's how I read, and I'll make sure it's clear for the record. Okay?
Do you have any other questions?
Hold on, hold on. We gotta get the recommendation from the advisors committee and we'll go from that. Does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends capable action.
Okay, so now, in motion, we have a second. I know there's gonna be some questions, but before we do that, why don't we have the senior center committee do their presentation of the ongoing agreement, and then we'll entertain questions as well. They got to run it back, I think. Okay?
To Becky Moriarty, Director of the Senior Center.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. A little thing. I have a quick slideshow to go through for you. Thanks for those who came up to the forums that we held. This is a little different, so stay tuned. I am Becky Moriarty. I've been the Director at the Senior Center for the last 21 years. And I'm just here to give you a little bit of information as to what we've been up to at the Senior Center and what our thoughts are about moving forward for the next 20 to 50 years. So, next slide, please. When you came in tonight, you hopefully picked up paperwork, and inside that folded paper is a lot of this information, so I'm not going to be very specific about it. I'll let you read through that if you're here too late. The information on the right-hand side when you open up that paperwork gives you information about the town of Hampton population. What I want to point out to specifically is that the over 60 population in Hampton right now is 39% of the total population of this town is over the age of 60. Go to the next slide, please. On this, on this slide, I know it's a little bit hard to see, but this shows, but this is also in your handout, this shows the ages of the people that are currently using the Senior Center. We know that this doesn't add up to 100%, that's because we don't have everyone's data first in our database, but we are working on that. That just gives you a breakdown of who's using the Senior Center. Next slide. This slide has become one of my favorite slides of all time. It's the famous Senior Center pie chart. And this shows that the Senior Center budget this year has hit 2% of the total town budget. So we're serving 39% of the population with 2% of the budget. We actually just hit 2% this year. We've always been 1% since I've been here for 21 years. Next slide. This is a list, we got a separate handout, but this is a listing of all of the programs and activities that take place at the Senior Center. Next slide. A lot of the things you will not see on our calendar or on our activity list because those are things that are happening behind the scenes. We're doing a lot of work for people who are economically insecure or who may be food insecure. We're helping people get food stamps, emergency fuel, fuel assistance. We're giving them the groceries. We're allowing them access to a food pantry. We're helping people renew their payments online. We're doing lock boxes and file of life. So that's a lot that's going on behind the scenes. We're counseling people when they're making decisions about Medicare and Mass Health and health connected things. So a lot of things are going on behind the scenes that you might see. Next slide. We are the only social service agency in Hampton, so we're a one-stop shop. If you come in, we're gonna do our best to help you with whatever question you might have. Next slide. We have space limitations at the Senior Center. If you've been in there, you've seen that we have some issues with storage, but we also have some issues with the way that we're able to run programs. We can't run several programs concurrently because we don't have the space to do it. So oftentimes, we're canceling one program in favor of another program. Happens on a regular basis. We also have transformed our custodial closet, and you can ask our custodian, he's here tonight. His custodian's closet, where he keeps his mops and brooms and chemicals, is where we provide foot care, massage, manicures, pedicures, facials, any personal needs service that you come into the Senior Center for, you're gonna go into the janitor's closet for that. We're hoping to remedy that. Our library is currently being used as a game activity space as opposed to being used for a library. You can head on to the next slide. So what we'd like to do is have some additional space to be able to run those programs concurrently, to give people a private space where they can have foot care done without sitting next to the mop bucket. We'd like to strengthen transportation and mental health programs for people. We'd also like to see an area where we could have a gift shop and a cafe. Those two things would be revenue generating for the Senior Center throughout the year, so that could help offset our budget and our programs. We'd like to provide continued intergenerational programs and obviously get a little bit more storage for all the things that are around in the halls of the center. Next slide. The Senior Center relies very heavily on volunteers and grant funding. So, in the last fiscal year, we utilized over 70 volunteers who gave over $3,300 volunteer hours to the town, saving just shy of $130,000. We also received a couple of grants, a state grant and a Title III grant to help fund two of our positions over at the center. Perhaps the next slide. We do have the Friends of Hampton senior citizens. They are a 501(c)(3) fundraising entity, and currently they have $50,000 set aside in a designated building fund. They also have a commitment to go out for a capital campaign to help bring in some more donations to help offset the cost if this project is approved. Next slide. These are just some pictures. You might not be able to see them in the back, but you can just flip through those. That was a movie day in the great room under the 50 people for St. Patrick's Day. We have a memory cafe for people with dementia and other related memory issues. This is our gift shop, our gift shop in the hallway. I brought in $800 in a three-month period. That money did go into the building fund. We have some limited storage issues. You can see some of our offices are crowded. The bridge group plays in the library on Monday. And blood pressure screenings, not private at all. They're happening right in the library. And there's the janitor's closet where you can get your nails cut. So thanks. I'll turn things over to Don Allen.
Don, don't forget, don't forget. Do you have more presentation or are we prepared to take questions?
More presentation.
All right.
First of all, I'd like to tell you about the building committee. In 2022, we selected the building committee to look into the spatial needs and current renovations required for the future 50 years of the Senior Center building. That many train-up aid citizens from the town of Hampton, we met the last year and a half, two times among established needs, we consulted with the director, staff, musicians of the center, and we sent a survey to the community people to input their ideas. We have established the needs, and then we went out and interviewed three design firms. We chose EDM Design. They presented us after we gave them our wish list. They presented us the four positive designs. We called that out with one slight modification, and they will present that plan to you tonight, to sign. There's four pieces of information that I'd like to convey. First, the operating cost of an town in Hampton to operate the Senior Center is number 37, 38 under budget there comes to about $255,000, which is actually a little less than 1%, a little less than 2% of the $16.9 million town budget. The balance is 54 hours, gave up for grants and seven volunteers for assistance. This is a very costly operation. Second item is study of demographics. In 1925, there were 5,139 people in the town. In 2024, as of May 8, thanks to information that they got from the town budget, there are 5,128 cents of the same numbers. However, when you look at it, in 2010, there were 1,235 people over 60 in town. And as of May this year, 2019, there's a 63% increase in senior population. Senior population now represents 39% of the town population. So, $6.6 million projected cost is worth, this is the plan that you built in year 25. If there's delay, there's dangers. Construction costs are going up 7% a year. Most of the potential redesign costs would be cost additional $500,000. Cost increase through inflation and the potential design. Finally, the Senior Center office is a very beautiful community. It served as an emergency shelter some 10 years ago when we had that October snowstorm that knocked out Hallard and the one that happened. They were scaled up for seven days, or several days, providing heat because they have a generator, lights, places to sleep and places to eat for many of the citizens of our town. It's very important now, friends of the Senior Center, that raised some money in a fair new, ready to go campaign. Seniors supported any community project over the years. Now we're asking our herbs for this project. Now I'd like to introduce you first on this, on EDM Design and the Gala Life Design Network. They have presented.
Just one step in for one sec. Guys, you're absolutely welcome to do the, do it. We're in like a 15-minute timeframe of the presentation. We haven't even made any questions yet. We got a little bit of a done in here through the middle. So, if you gentlemen would do it, just for the sense of time, clearly this is an important question to make a number. It's gonna require, require two votes. So, but I am well aware of the time, and also I want to make sure there's time for questions starting with you, sir. So, if you're not here, thanks. Let's go.
Don.
Don.
Don. Thanks, Don. I'll be brief, Don, and Becky did a good job explaining the needs and workers and all that here. So I just wanted to explain really quickly the design and kind of issues of the center. Again, thanks Chris Wante for looking at EDM Design Studio from the Architect Home Project. The existing center is about 7,400 square feet. What we're proposing is just over 12,000 quadrants per feet. You're looking at on the screen here is the proposed plan. In addition to some of the spaces that exist, I mean, you renovate the billiards room, the craft room, the great multi-purpose space, you know, the office administration areas. We're proposing this space that includes a cafe, a seat lounge, an entry space, a small multi-purpose room that can be used for small gatherings and use of 16 people. On the east side, the multi-purpose space, I think, accommodate activities, there are many sort of exercise classes, yoga, or meetings of about 40 people for groups that manage a gathering. A nurses' room that will take place of the janitor's closet, where the foot care takes place right now, and the cell screenings, one additional office, two counseling spaces, a small gift shop, additional restaurants, wooden double storage spaces that is currently existing in the senior center. The building will also require a sprinkler system because the national law requires an annual 700 square feet to have sprinklers. So any additions to the senior center will require a sprinkler system. So that will require a small structure on site to help fire pumping and above ground walls to accommodate. So, if you just want to go over the next slide a little quick. The plan that you see up here is in the handout set, you didn't give a presentation, you need one of those up here. Yeah, keep on. I've known lobbying up here, we just asked the run rings of some of the proposed aesthetic, you know, what the building would potentially be, the manage or the additions of land into the existing architecture of the building, you know, the surrounding context. So those are the ideas, and then they seem like a couple of them. So, that's just a really brief overview of the proposal and the proposed plan, and we'll open it up to questions.
Okay, absolutely. So, it is time for questions, and you, sir, for the first one.
Judy McMorrit, Randy Buss, South Road, again. I'm a rocket scientist, but I just want to run some numbers, say them out loud, and I want to ask the clerk within the advisory committee if I have the numbers out there that they represented. So, I had a $6.6 million of what we're looking at for the cost of the enhancements to the Senior Center. The timeframe is 10 months or 304 days, and I see the listings from the clerk with regards to the number of individuals who access it both in-town and with other towns, humanitatively. My number of work out to for the town ham usage, 103 people per month, which equates to 3.3 people per day using Hampton relative to the facility, with all top account for 183 people per month or an average of six people per day. My question to the clerk is, can the clerk confirm the participant data received from Senior Center as collected by the My Senior Center tracking software? And then my question to the advisory committee is, can they explain the tax burden for individuals in the town? And is there any debt offset by other towns for the $6.6 million dollars? Thank you.
So let's, let's take the first part of the question first. I'm not sure who's gonna tackle it, which is the usage question. Daily usage, would that be, Becky, would that be you? I'm not sure who's gonna do it, but I will.
I can argue that we have more than six people that come into Senior Center on a daily basis. I can't give you a specific number for every day, but I could say that our average lunch attendance throughout the week is 20, depending on the day. Some days it's less, some days it's more. But we do have more than six people on a daily basis. I would say that we're averaging between 50 and 75 people on a daily basis.
Okay, so that's the usage question. We'll keep on, hold on a sec. So, I did see today something different here. She, Dick, do you have to address the question on the cost? Task费 requirement specifically?
Thank you. My name is Gregor Hammond. So yeah, a number of people have asked me what my guess is, and what the cost basis on this is. This is a municipal bond project. It's a bond mortgage, so it's a little bit hard to predict here. In 14 years I've been doing this now, I've only done one at the police station. This is by far, this is twice the size of that project. We were also involved in the high school, one of the Albert River High School today. When you're doing a municipal bond project like this, as the project's being built, you borrow with short-term notes, state guaranteed bond installation, those they call a band, that are going to break this. And then when the last absolute penny is spent, and the architects uns冢 gets his final check, then we go out and we go through this listing where we sold municipal bonds. The reason I tell you this is you're asking for interest rate three years from now. So, and the bond market is different than mortgage market because it's also affected by the tax rates and tax brackets as it pushes them down, given that. So, I have a range of scenarios. If we were as lucky as we were on the police station, which remember that was six years ago, 2008? Anybody remembers the economic times in 2008? We had a great mortgage there. If for some reason we're as lucky as that, it would cost us about $550,000 a year. More likely, on the high end, we're talking about $800,000 a year. Now, what does that mean? The census counting, the average house is $377,000. So, assuming you're looking at an average house, if we do the real, if we're lucky to get the real number, my guess is $257.30 a year for 20 years. And if we're unlucky to get the high number, it's $361.45 a year. Notice you have to rest in any way, any wild guesses. And of course, this would be on top of whatever the compounding tax increase, which, which was on that $377,000 house last year, was $289.43. Any questions? Don't mind me.
Other questions? Hold on one sec. I'll come back. Anybody else? Let's go here to the front row. I still got you, I didn't forget.
Hi, Eric Vanery, Raymond Drive, 166 Raymond Drive. I have a question. I've seen a lot of data and information online on the website, but I have not seen a cost breakdown of what the labor is, what the construction materials, what is the breakdown? In my opinion, I'm all for taking care of our senior citizens, but I think $6.6 million is an extremely large number. Not even double the size. Just my opinion, but that's that. But I'd love to see a cost breakdown of the actual costs of the whole entire project, dollar for dollar, what the labor, construction materials, the hallways. I don't know if that's available, but I'd love to see it.
Is, is the information still available? Be interested?
I apologize, Mr. They were done by a professional partner. This is their business. Here's about a 15-page presentation to us on giving a detailed breakdown of most of the costs.
Is there a, because it's a little late to give a 15-page presentation, but we have a square footage number or something to answer the question, or it's not broken down that way down?
Well, you could go into a 15-page and break it down. It's all detailed, and then a 15-page presentation.
Okay, so it's just the one number that's down. Hold on a sec. Can you put your name, sir? Hold on, let's go back. Mr. Abes, you have another question. And then we'll come in. I got you, man.
Mr. McMorrit, Randy Buss, South Road, again. Just wanted to raise a question to the town clerk since it was labeled as town clerk numbers. Can she validate the 1,027 in-town, 1,229 other towns participants in the data? Because that doesn't quite drive the 75 that. I've got three people that did the audit for that 304 day period. I'm asking for confirmation of the data that represented in the annual report or the top report is out there.
The only information that I can find is the number of seniors for the facility, total population of the town. With a variety of attendings, right? Because I wouldn't have any idea. That would be more question for seniors. So, just to be able to, maybe it's the breakdown of the town, that would be.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Ariel, you're next.
As a town resident who appreciates all the things you do for our community and all that the senior center does, senior center does for all of us, it is difficult for me to speak against anything such a ones. However, this does not allow me to abandon a commitment to the responsibility of stewardship of our resources. Having attended open information sessions sponsored by the Senior Center, I would like to highlight a few things you are of consideration. One, the population of the community has been relatively constant, declining ever so slightly over the years. Ampearson to the neighboring community, also communities, also reveals that we often are most recent in states with smallest population. Whether it's 36% or 39% of our population is over 60, depending on who you ask. Of the people who use the center, only approximately half are working. Further, La Meadow and Lurie Ham now have new senior centers that can impact participation at our center and usefulness. The three reasons I gave to this project were the need for more storage-based, program-based, and offices. While these may all be legitimate concerns, we should beat them in a more friskly responsible way. $6.6 million will nearly double the size of the Hamilton Senior Center. When discussing the cost proposals, cost proponents note that the average home value in Hamilton is approximately $377,000, I think you said tonight, and that will be the tax rate, tax bill of $250 out of $361, depending on when the conditions are at the time. I am particularly concerned that this project is being proposed in isolation rather than in light of the needs of the entire community. For example, the fire department is looking into an extensive proposal ranging from new station to renovations of the present site, and the townhouse and town offices are a concern. The library requires expansion. We have extensive water concerns and urgency prepared. For emergencies addressing and the traffic pattern, the alley sweep and sidewalk require consideration. With all these needs, we should... The library requires expansion. We have extensive water concerns and emergency prepared. For emergencies addressing and the traffic pattern, the alley street and sidewalks require consideration. With all these needs, we should prioritize maintaining volumes and heritage for our town of each generation, remembering the challenging circumstances in which we live. I can't go against this proposal because its cost, size, and especially the complete failure to analyze and prioritize the needs of our entire town. At present, and with everything we need, it just doesn't seem that $6.6 million senior center should be our top priority. Thank you.
Thank you, John, you're the third president on my behalf. What place that haven't been so far, what have you thought?
John, we talked.
Really?
We can't hear you.
We talked about the 2% of the budget as a senior center. And with these numbers, even using the higher number, I heard about Eric. That percentage of the budget for the town could grow at 5%. And that 5% represents taking care of, what number do I need, 37, 38% of the town. We spend two-thirds of the budget to take care of the children, and rightly so. But we're arguing over the fact that we're increasing that less than 10% number to take care of the basic portion of our population. We do have projects that are part of the town. This town has never denied supporting any project unfolding. I've been around a while, I've seen both come forward for school expansions, highway department expansions, water expansions. And the town has always recognized deeper importance of the quality of handouts. We talk about the fact that maybe not everybody goes to the senior center. Maybe the reason is because they notice property. And when it expands, more programs can be offered and more space can be reserved. I think there's not a duty for the town to address the needs and enroll. The seniors in our building committee, consisting of your neighbors, many of whom on the committee have never served or volunteered in public service before, sat in those rooms for over a year, talked to everybody, learned as much as they could, and they came by with this recommendation. I think they deserve a chance to make their case. I think I thank them for their service. And I think if they come on the town to look at what they brought here and say, is this the direction we want for the town? If this other one responds with another demographic like we've done before, Mrs. Glover's correct. We have these requirements and will bring them to you in the future. But just because there's a future need, doesn't mean we dismiss the need we have right now. It's a project we can afford, but Tommy Hammond has always stood up and taken care of this team. Thank you.
Jerry. Who do you draw?
Full disclosure, my name is Kerry Laner, 53 Mile Road, here in Hammond. And I'm a member of the senior center building committee, and I'm also a senior. Of course, they met in Minnesota. You got it painted in tonight. You were handed out a picture of the what we're proposing, but also you were handed a portion to describe. And if you were like me a year and a half ago, before I joined the committee, more than likely when you came last month in the overhand time, you probably set it aside. I did, because I didn't feel the need to take a look at it. But since I've gone to the committee, and tonight I would ask you, take a look at the schedule for the month of May for the senior center. There is no way that only three people walk through that door on any of the. But more importantly, turn it over and look at the bottom right-hand corner, where we talk about outreach services that the center gives you. These aren't just seniors. These are people here in your community that have needs. And we've spent a year and a half not building the Cadillac or the Tesla. We don't have an elevator. We don't have pickleball courts. What we did was to try to maximize the needs and the space. And we didn't select Plan A, which was much larger. We called it down and the people on this committee made some very hard choices about the mon square footage. And I'll just leave you with this couple of numbers. All of us here in the last 10 years have appropriated $144-plus billion dollars to the operation of police, fire, schools, our children, and the senior center. We've built the Minnissaw High School. We've added on to the Green Meadow School. And through all those 10 years, including this budget tonight, the seniors participated and they didn't back away. Of $144 million that has been spent in this town in the last 10 years or will be spent, the senior center took $1.9 million out of that $144 million. And I don't think that $6.6 million is an overly large money to spend on more than 35, 36, or 38% of the population because we're all getting older and we all are looking for needs for either ourselves or our parents as time goes on. So I would ask you to vote yes. And as I say, think of this number. $144 million of seniors have helped fund the police and fire, Minnissaw High School. And all they asked was $1.9 million out of that. Thank you.
Yes. Please come out. I recognize the only for our. Are you just about to ask a question? And then your next, pardon.
I've admired the seniors of many years now. My wife loves it. But I want to say something else. If you can read between the lines or if you visit the senior center, our aspirations, what we have been striving for is not just we seniors. We are a community facility. We reach out beyond our age group. We have strived for years for intergenerational commitment because hand is of all communities. And this facility is going to serve you in more ways than you need to understand tonight. Thank you.
First term news, 165 Drive. So you might, well, if you come around Christmas time, Christmas Eve, you'll get overwhelmed. Anyway, just an observation here, right? Numbers, $6 million, that's a scary number. It really is. But then you look on the sheet and you look at all the things that are happening here. And you know, as an educator, I identify what these folks are going through. They're using every single resource that they have over there to its mass, to its maximum capability. And there ain't any hammer difference. So I guess you're going to vote, you have a guess, is this about a number or is this about making a difference? Thank you.
I see one more hand. I see two. I just want to caution, the questions are starting, the answers and questions are starting to get repetitive. So I'm looking to move the question. We'll take these last two and then we're going to take the vote. One, two. Why don't you vote first? Please.
Should I just talk next to him?
Yes, pick it up. Yep, sorry.
Well, I've never done this before, so it doesn't work. Does that work?
Yeah.
I agree with everything that's been said about senior center, senior center. But I have a question, and the question is.
Can I just say your name, please?
Tom Sorri, calling me up. So my question is, how much of this $6.6 million is refurbishment and how much is for additional space? And my comment is, you know, I'm not a architect or a contractor or anything, but it is a big number. I really do think it would help us a lot if we knew the breakdown of what all adds up to $6.6 million. It's a big number. City center is important, but my own feeling is we, I do have asked these cities, have city seniors or they used to go out to the plumbing ward and give us better than A, B, C. And I know you wanted to, I'm sorry to say that, but it's a big number and more information to have. I think more likely we could find the support for the other town. But that's my phone.
All right, so that's okay. So I think there was a question there which was about the cost and breakdown, and hold on, I'm going to let you go. But I think I, do you have the, you know, the specific number that I can bring you down a little bit? Fair enough. Go ahead, give us that. The reference is appreciated. Thank you.
So as Anna mentioned, the architectural team hired a third-party consultant to do the estimate, that's all they do all day, every day, estimate, they plug it with the structural. So we definitely trust their opinion. Right down to $6.6 million, I don't have the exact, you know, down to the degree of thing. We do have that, I know why you're talking about, Donald's talking about. But kind of big picture breakdown of you guys is of $6.6 million, we estimate $5 million worth of construction of their site, the addition and renovation. I don't know offhand what the renovation was, the extension is right now, but we definitely can, you know, peel that away from estimate. But $5 million is for the actual construction of the site and the building. But $1.6 million is what we call soft costs. And without getting into, you know, the definition and all that, the parts that, on that have, we think like furniture, artificial, technology for the building, design fees, owner's contingencies, construction contingencies, there's different pieces in the parts of that. But essentially, we have $5 million that we call hard construction cost, $1.6 million is soft cost. So that might help with the breakdown of the construction a little bit, but I don't know the exact, you know, first square foot, the extension, and you shouldn't, I have to.
Can I have this one? And your name now just gets.
My name is Tiffany. I live on that Green Terrace, I've been here about just 1980. I just want to solve a math problem here. 1,027 people use, from Hammond, use the senior center, and somebody said three a day. My wife goes there eight days a month, eight times a month. I go there all the time, tax month. So if you went two people, that's like almost 20 visits. So I think that's the real numbers. That's all.
A lot of expressions. I'm going to move the question now. Connie, I didn't see you. Connie, since I didn't see you, your hand is now up. We have one more. It's going to be you. Come on up. You got us down on the chair, make it even.
Maybe I should have sat in the front.
Great. All right, one more, you got it next.
Okay, I don't know how.
We're just talking to it. It's already on, it's ready to go.
Okay, time limit, four, seven, seven days. There are many different opinions on senior center.
And here you go.
There are many different opinions on the senior center. I've spent weeks doing some research on senior centers around the state. Most of them in western Massachusetts because that's where we live, that's the time we really are. I also researched on Cape, and I said, well, let's try a lovely town in Massachusetts. I did, it's good. And go with them, not even have senior center. They have programs. The Cole Office is in their community center. They have programs in churches, the community center, the library, schools. They utilize everything in town. They're very much like us. They're a very small town, they're 6,000, where only 4,000 and something, but they are very small. So that's how they solve their senior centers than put the other senior centers in our area. It just doesn't make sense. If this senior center renovation expansion is built, it will be an area of 1.51 square feet per resident. With the addition, that's our senior center now. At that rate, we are the largest senior center that I researched. And I did Monson, Ludlow, Delphi Town, I did towns in our area. If with the addition, we would be 2.76 square feet per resident, we would be the largest senior center in our area. I mean, I'm talking about the whole of western Massachusetts. This might possibly be the largest senior center in the state for residents. So if we look at every town, all the.
Everybody, please, not unfinished.
And there are a couple of other reasons why we shouldn't do this. We have to be very careful with our money by now because we have a lot of projects that we absolutely have to do. There are health and safety issues. They're going to cost a lot of money. We're not even sure how much money we're going to have spent for water. Water is an absolute necessity. A senior center renovation, addition is not. But I don't believe that I should get up here and say no to a project without another solution. And so I did a bunch of research and figured out that if we put an addition on to the west side of the senior center, that was 630 square feet. We are not clear in a one, six, twenty. 630 square feet would give us, we might, our three offices. We would have room for nurse, personal care, a veteran agent, and we could purchase a shed for storage and get creative, use Zoom, use Word, Burps, use the police stations, use Bethland and Almond Church for programs. That's what other communities are doing. So anyway, adding on that addition would be a half a million dollars. And I think we could do that. Oh, the toilet, which do need to be changed out, it was a design, does not require any new plumbing. Just a holding the toilet, takes it off and putting on another one. So anyway, that's, that's the rule to my team. If anyone has a better solution, please come up here.
I really want to move this question. Been on this for 50 minutes now. I feel it's equally balanced. If you have one more comment, but it's got to be less than a minute.
I'm Doug Gallow. I'm the Architect Lifespan Design Studio, and we are senior center design specialists. We work all over the country, my wife and myself. My wife is a gerontologist, she studied aging. I'm a universal designer, design for aging specialist. Just to give you some closing things to think about. 38, 39% of this town is over the age of 60. That's probably about 8% more than what we see in most of the communities that we design senior centers. I've been involved in designing, studying over 150 senior centers in my career. When I look at population, think of what council on aging is doing through your community. The fact that a third of all older adults over the age of 85 are experiencing subsortive dementia doesn't mean they need to be institutionalized. I think a lot of us. By the year 2035, there will be more people in this country over the age of 65 than under the age of 18. And I suspect the fact that you are 39% of the population is already over the age of 60, you may have already reached that threshold. So I just want you to think about all of these facts. With all the senior centers that we've ever designed, they've always accrued the amount of participation, sometimes double the amount of participation. As I've talked about, the fact that there isn't enough room to have multiple activities going on at one time. We've actually seen senior centers that have tripled their population in a year's time. So the need is they have, during COVID, there was lots of studies done about isolation, and especially with older adults. And it was determined that the impact of COVID and not being socializing on a regular basis was the equivalent of smoking two packs of cigarettes a day on people, both mental and physical health. So just some facts and things.
We're going to move the question. There are questions and comments, they've started to get a little bit. All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second, we've had discussion. This question will be on the ballot next week. We need a two-thirds majority because of the borrowing. Two folks willing to count, if we can't declare the two-thirds, we have, please, have all votes in favor of the question. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, don't we have to vote on the question? Or we can vote on the actual article itself?
No, he's doing it in his own accord.
Yeah.
Moderator has authority to choose.
Sure, okay. So we are voting on the question to approve this motion for the ballot, Austin.
We have to move, we have to approve. To move the question.
There is no motion, I'm moving it in my own accord. So there is no motion to move it, I'm doing it.
If there were people that wanted to...
No, I can, I have the authority to move the question. And I'm going to do it, because we have 50 minutes plus of back and forth, and I think it's been fair. And I've got people, it's time to move the question. No, we are not, Austin. I appreciate and respect your comment, especially as someone who served. I believe it's time to move the question. As the moderator, I have the authority to do it. We are going to vote. So let me just repeat. We will need a clear two-thirds. There are two folks willing to count. This is the first hurdle, or whatever you'd like to call it, because it will be on the ballot next week. So if I show a hand, all those in favor of the question, please raise. Those opposed. Moderator declares the two-thirds.
Moderator.
I would need 10 people to raise their hands to demand a count, so I'm going to ask, please don't leave. How, how is it that they're leaving on the second run? Please do not leave. If 10 people raise their hands and require a count, I declared the two-thirds, and I'm convinced it's easily two-thirds. Count is demanded by 10 folks. Thank you, Rose, for clearing up. Then we will have a count. We have 10 people who wish for this to be counted. Number two, three, four, we're going to have a count, we have 10. So I'm going to need you guys to go count. So don't, take that out, we'll all, you get the selected two, these guys.
You want me to get two?
Yeah, and just to get that, yeah. Please raise your hand if you are in favor of the question. And keep your hands up so they can be counted. Please keep your hands up if you're on the page, just to make it more available.
This side you. Six eight five?
If you are against the question, please raise your hand, please keep your hands up.